Welcome everyone to this town hall meeting. We've had a couple in the past, all right, which have been well attended and obviously, hopefully, people are here because they found the other ones useful. But it's great to have you all here today, particularly on such a beautiful day out there. I want to just start out with a couple of things. First of all, many of you I know are aware that one of our students was injured the other night in an Occupy Wall Street event downtown. We have reached out to that student or trying to help as much as we can. And the only thing I would say is, please, everybody, try to be as safe as possible. I know many of you will participate in other activities and just be as safe as you can possibly be. Second thing is, I want to invite everyone, we're going to run a couple of seminars that our Vice President for Finance Frank Barletta along with Neil Gerboy, the Dean of Milano, will run a couple of seminars that will discuss the financing of higher education. It's a topic that's become very important in the country. You might want to learn a little bit more about it by attending the first session. They're going to do a couple of these. The first session is going to be actually this Thursday, two days from now, at 3:00 PM in Lang Cafe. But we will also announce some other ones, some other of these seminars you can attend. We are, so everybody's aware, we are videotaping this town hall for the archives. I think we're probably going to post it on the website, the website as well. One other, and this really came from a number of suggestions that we received, we are going to put on a town hall at night in April for those faculty, students, and staff who can't make it during the day. And so the date we have picked is Tuesday, April 3rd. It'll be at 6:30 PM in Kellin Auditorium over in the Shilla Johnson Building. And finally, we're also thinking about trying to use Twitter and some other social media to replicate town halls in the future as another way of reaching out to everyone. All right, so we have, oops, we have a pretty tight agenda, but we want to finish right at, I think it's 12:45 in order to allow plenty of time for open questions and discussion and comment. But let me start out by asking our co-chairs of the University Student Senate just to come up and say a few words. I think it's Melissa Holmes, Catherine Towell, and Bronwyn Lewis. I don't know if all of you are going to come up or, yeah, come on.
Hello, good afternoon. My name's Melissa Holmes. I'm one of the co-chairs. This is Bronwyn Lewis and Catherine Towell. We also have one of our new senators here, Jen's, I can't say, ace drop, I tried. So, welcome. Today we got smart and handed, hopefully, a lot of you a handout. We only made 150 copies. But basically, I always tell you that newschoolsenate.org is the website you should go to check us out, and I say a little bit about events, but we just wanted to give you something so you could actually look at it. One of the things we're doing upcoming, which is listed on there, and I'm really excited to tell you about, is we are co-hosting with a couple of different organizations. We've invited activist Grace Lee Boggs to our campus. She's a 95-year-old activist who was very well-known for what she's done for the civil rights, but she's coming here and talking about the civil rights movement and correlating it to where we are today with Occupy Wall Street. So, I really wanted to note that particularly. And we also have another of amazing events that we've funded and supported, so that's on your list. Next big piece of news for us is we have just elected next year's Student Senate. So, I've actually yet to meet a lot of our senators, but I do know some of them personally. And next year's Student Senate is going to be absolutely amazing, and I am so excited. We are planning a leadership retreat for them, so that's something we've never done in the past, and it's really going to be something to look forward to. This year, for the Student Senate, we've done a lot of foundation laying. Something that I've been thinking a lot is the fact that, as an institution, the New School was founded with this progressive ideology. We didn't even have rooms in the very beginning. And then about 10 years ago, the Student Senate formed because we really didn't agree with the bureaucracy of the New School. And so, it was just this amorphous collection of students who were political activists. And then, about three years ago, we started collecting dues from students and got about $5 per semester, $10 a year, equalling in about $100,000. And so, all of a sudden, although we had this kind of amorphous foundation, we had a lot of money. And when you have a lot of money and you don't have structure, it's really a problem. So, I am really happy to share that we have worked so hard in the past two years to lay a solid foundation that I am so optimistic for next year's Senate, because with that foundation, we can actually have a Student Senate who is political and active. And so, I would like to congratulate all the Student Senators for next year and just welcome them. So, just to touch on one thing that I would like to mention that we've done this year is a program we created called Dinner and Discussion. Dinner and Discussion was actually formed for a couple of different reasons. One of the reasons is realizing that although we oftentimes joke about being college students who are eating ramen and don't have a lot of money, there are students in this institution who are really struggling. And we wanted to do the little part that we could to have a dinner, at least a couple of times a semester, and make sure that the student body was invited. Also, the discussion point of that, there is not really a space for students to be able to just talk sometimes. You know, we're always writing papers and we're always having these debates, but sometimes you just need an open space. For the dinner discussions, we've had a couple that were really successful. The first one was amazing. It was right in the beginning of the Occupy Wall Street movement, and we had a great robust conversation that I still think back to some of the comments that were made then, and it's formed my opinion of the current political discussion about Occupy Wall Street. We've had some dinner discussions where at the last minute, we had to cancel because as students, we had a lot to do, and didn't inform the public well enough and really got a lot of heat for it. It is what it is. But we are actually going to be having a dinner and discussion in the next couple of weeks about police brutality and how, as students and as a community, we deal with situations with what happened to a young woman that, in our community, is an inspiration. And it's scary. And the reason that we think a dinner discussion is important, because, you know, when this happened, as a student, as a student leader, as student leaders, people ask, "How are you going to react to this?" And the truth of the matter is, I have no idea how I'm supposed to react to this, because I don't know. I mean, I have so many different emotions happening all at once, and at a place like the Dinner Discussion, I want to be able to talk about that. And I want to have a place where my peers can just share things with one another. So, that is, I think, a great accomplishment of this year's Senate. And I am going to actually pass the microphone to Catherine Towell, who has another amazing announcement to make.
Hi, I'm Catherine. I'm a senator from Lang and also one of the co-chairs. I'd just like to echo Melissa's sentiments that knowing a lot of the incoming and outgoing Senate personally, I'm very excited for where we're going with this year. As she said, we've worked a lot on just strengthening our infrastructure within the Senate and streamlining a lot of the processes we do. However, in the coming year, we're going to be placing more emphasis on encouraging the student body to take a more active role in our community, both politically and just having, you know, their causes and their voices championed within the institution. Now, following the occupation of 95th Avenue, it became increasingly clear to all of us that we needed a student space to allow for student organization. And with that in mind, I'm pleased to announce that upon completion of the new building located at the former site of 65 Fifth Avenue, some changes are going to be taking place in order to centralize key offices in the university. Similar divisional offices, such as career services, will come together. And most excitingly, 95th Avenue will transition from a study space to a student union. The Office of Student Development and Affairs, that's OSDA, will remain in place. The University Student Senate will be moving into this space. And a student coalition that's made up of student leaders from any organization that's willing to join will also be moving into this space. While we'll be ironing out more transitions as the date nears, effectively, 95th Avenue will be turned into an area for student groups to come together and discuss and plan and have advice and resources located very conveniently nearby. Now, some of you might be wondering, "Well, what's going to happen to our study space?" Well, meanwhile, Arnold Hall will be retaining its lab space, and the space now that is its library holdings will transition into a study space as those holdings are moved into the library space at the new building. Now, as Melissa said, the New School never can and never will be a traditional university. However, we owe it to ourselves to just share the very exciting ideas that we are lucky enough to learn here. And most importantly, we need to start sharing that with our peers, those who are in the university and don't get access to the ideas. If anything, the occupation did show us that there was a schism between those who were politically active and those who didn't necessarily understand what was being sought after. So, that's something that we're seeking to change, where everyone is more aware and our community lives up to the radical reputation that we have tried so hard to cultivate in the history of the university. That being said, I hope that you all can share my excitement for this as we move into a new, bright, and interesting era for the New School.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, we'd like to hear from the co-chairs for the University Faculty Senate, James Dodd and Susan Yelovich.
Thank you, David. James is pleading allergies. Chris is somewhere. He's not with us today. He's a little overwhelmed. I have no money to give out or to take in, unfortunately. We don't have dues, but if you want to send any, you know, you don't remember the Soupy Sale Show, you go into your mother's purse?
It works.
Yes, and gets you fired. At any rate, after David's installation this fall, we got off to a great start, you know, with David, he was already fully engaged, but, you know, going full throttle, working with Tim. The most exciting thing about the Senate has been, there have been a lot of particulars, which I could go into, but the big picture for this year, I think you would agree, is that we've decided that in order to be more actively engaged, we need to be more informed. David's great about informing us with data. We've invited Rosemary Mathewson to meetings, who will deal with, and Jim O'Connor. We have concerns about the relationship between academic technology and information technology. So, instead of just going head-on and saying, "This is the issue," we did a little investigation that's developing into further conversations. There were concerns about faculty, knowledge of participation, and budgetary concerns. Roy Moskowitz and Frank Barletta came and met with us. Again, an ongoing conversation. Jim O'Connor is going to be coming back with Carolyn Comiskey, correct, to talk about the online evaluation system that students use. So, that in addition to meeting monthly with Tim and David has given us a better perspective on the issues. It was very helpful, and I'm sure they're going to talk about budget issues, for them to clarify that a lot of the cuts were, most of the cuts, the majority of the cuts, the university has to suffer are being made on the administrative side, so we could quickly quell rumors that the faculty was bearing the brunt. I do want to thank our excellent committee chairs, Alexandra Wagner on Faculty Affairs, Ted Byfield on Infrastructure, and James is devil-doing on Governance. We have also made sure that there's a senator on every provost office committee, and those three committees are Faculty Affairs, sorry, Curriculum, Research, and, no, Curriculum, and then the other one is the Research Council, Curriculum Development and the Research Council. Other than that, I think I should probably defer to David and Tim. We have a short time.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, James. Are we okay, we don't have people standing way back there? Maybe people can come down a little bit inside. We might have to have the people on the side stand up if you want to see. Just I want people stuck back there in the hallway. Well, first of all, let me say, I've been here, I've been here now a little over a year, and, you know, there are a number of reasons why I came to the New School. One was its longstanding tradition of change and being on the cutting edge. Another was it, you know, it really being publicly engaged and always challenging the status quo throughout its history. And finally, you know, it was the resources of New York City. I think it was the greatest city, greatest urban place in the world. And, you know, I've been here now a year, and I must say that all those things I was expecting were true, very much true, and it's very exciting to be here. And I think even more importantly, since I've arrived here, you know, I've seen the people here, whether it's students, it's faculty, or staff, you know, they're all here because they want to be here. They want to be part of a particular institution, an institution that I was giving a little bit of a description of just a second ago. They're all highly creative. They're open, they're open to new ideas and doing things in new ways, and they're really willing to take on challenges and want to be agents for positive change. And those, that's probably the core of our strength, the wonderful thing about the New School that's here. And I think we should be very proud, very proud of that heritage, but also very proud of what we are, very proud of what we are today. Back in September, when I gave an installation speech, I tried to identify a couple of principles that I thought did represent the New School throughout its history. And they are, they are the two, I think, which are, that were a very creative, innovative, and cutting-edge place that's always challenging the status quo. And second of all, we're publicly engaged, whether it's engaged in the outside world trying to affect change, or it's using the outside world to the benefit of our students in education, in putting our students out there, out there in order to, in order to learn much more. So, those, I think we start off with some great assets. What Tim and I have been trying to do with other leaders at the university and many of you, is to try to rethink the strategy, to rethink the strategy for the New School going forward. And there are a couple principles, I think, or a couple ideas that are guiding, guiding this effort. One is that we all know, the circumstances of higher education in the United States are interesting to say the least. I think there's a lot of stress on higher education right now. A lot of change is coming to, coming to higher education. A second sort of principle I think we have our eyes on is that we are really committed to the success of all of our students and graduates, regardless of where they go, in what is really an increasingly complex world, a world in which our graduates have to be very creative, innovative, they have to push the envelope to be problem solvers in order to make a real contribution. And with those in mind, you know, we've been trying to move towards a clearer academic vision for, for the New School. And it's something, the vision is something that needs to focus on our strengths, do what we can really do best, and it also means we can't do everything, you know, there'll be times that there'll be activities that we can't, we can't continue or shouldn't continue. But in doing this, I think the New School does have tremendous strengths and advantages. One of the things we want to do is be sure that we're working to those strengths. That is, we're taking advantage of the strengths that we have across the different divisions. The New School did grow up in more of a silo, various, a set of silent activities, but I think there's a lot that we can untap. Now, this is not something new. I know before I got here that various provosts, going back, going back a number of provosts, were thinking this and beginning to work on this. We have, we have one of our longest-serving provosts right here, so. But I don't think, you know, it's not, this idea is nothing new, at least for me, you know. Tim's been here so long that maybe they did originate with him. But the idea, no, is to pull people together, is to pull people together and take real advantage of what our, what our strengths are. And, you know, I think it's fair to say that most of our programs, in one way or another, revolve around creative approaches to problems, whether it's what's going on in Parsons, whether it's what's going on in the New School for Social Research, or any of our other divisions. And, you know, I think finally, what's very important is that we have to have the ability ourselves to innovate and change what we do, in both the way we organize ourselves, but also the way we teach for faculty, the way we do our jobs, whether faculty, staff, or students for that matter. And we need to, we need to have that kind of flexibility and innovative eye onto our own activities as well as, as what we're looking at in the outside, in the outside world. So, we've embarked on a strategic planning process, and the idea behind this is really to engage as much of the community as we can in this process. Why? Because there's tremendous creativity, creative energy in our community that we need to take, we need to take full advantage of. We've already engaged in our, continuing to engage in discussions with various constituencies. We've had a number of Board of Trustees meetings on these. The deans are meeting constantly about some of these issues, along with their associate deans, department heads. We've talked with the University Student Senate, as well as the Faculty Senate, on some of these issues. We have right now going on an accreditation process with the Middle States, with the Middle States Commission. We formed a number of committees there of faculty, students, and staff who are addressing some of these, some of these issues. And finally, we're beginning to reach outside the walls of the university, to reach out to people in the community, to employers, to thought leaders and others in terms of, "What should we be doing?" Give us some feedback, "What should we be doing here?" And I want to emphasize that this whole process is not sort of a fixed process. It's an ongoing, ever-changing process. There are going to be many things, we've made some changes already, and those will continue. Other things, it'll take more time to do. And you're constantly reviewing and revising what you did. What you thought a year ago was a great idea may turn out not to be such a great idea. And then you have to tack back and go on and figure out some other way to, way to approach that. But I think there are already a number of examples of this going on. We, you know, this past fall, we introduced in NSPE, the New Masters in Environmental Policy and Sustainability Management. I think that's been a big success. There are four new master's programs coming out of Parsons that will start up this, start up this fall. The work on the Parsons, the new undergraduate curriculum for Parsons is certainly well under, well underway. We have spent some time in the last number of months with Pippin Parker focusing on revising and reforming the drama school in ways we think are, will work to our, work to our benefit. We have made, and I think I call these sort of academic platform changes, but we, in order to bring the university together, we have agreed upon a common timetable for next, for next fall, so that everyone is on the same class schedule, so it makes it easier for class, for students and faculty to move between courses and between, in between divisions. We've published our common online course catalog for the entire university, which hadn't been done before. And finally, we instituted, we're starting in Lang, but instituted a program, a software called Degree Works, which will help students online figure out whether they met the requirements for a particular degree they're, they're pursuing. And finally, and I won't dwell on this too much, but, you know, we started last spring a service initiative in order to improve service throughout. That again is an ongoing process. There'll be more reports about that. I hope you've seen some change. You can't do everything at once, but I do think there's been some good signs of improvement there. So, let me now turn to the finances, the finances of the university. And I lead into this by saying, I think the strengths and the things I was talking about, the fact that we're in a strategic planning process, are all going to stand us very well in addressing some of the economic challenges, and these are challenges that face all of higher education. First of all, let me say that the New School is not in a financial crisis, okay? We're actually financially very sound. I think what we're doing here, I know what we're doing here, is we're planning for the future. I mean, we're trying to, we want to get ahead of the curve and not be caught the way many universities are, that all of a sudden have to make very drastic, drastic cuts to, cuts to their expenditures. And we want, we're doing this in order to be sure the university does, does continue to be financially sound. And let me tie this back, industry planning, the fact that we have to look at the financial situation in the university doesn't mean that we're derailing the strategic process. Actually, the strategic process is going to help us a lot, and if anything, the financial conditions that are out there affecting all of us will actually accelerate some of the changes that we need to make, need to make or would have made for strategic, for strategic reasons. Probably the most important thing in planning for the future is that we, we've decided that we need, at least for budgetary planning, to move away from, move away from a plan that has us growing very rapidly. The plan that was in place last January had us growing our enrollment at the university about 4% a year. Tuition was planned to go up 4.5% a year for a number of years going forward. That's just not sustainable for two reasons. One, and I said this when I first started here, it impacts academic quality. It's not good for academic quality, so we needed to, we needed to wind that down. Now, the financial circumstances this fall have also brought home the fact that increasing enrollment that fast or tuition just was not viable in the, in the current economic, current economic environment. So, we, you know, we've made a decision to really change our budgeting going forward and to assume basically no growth overall, on average. It doesn't mean that some programs won't grow, other programs will shrink, but overall, not to increase our enrollment. And then second, try to keep our tuition increases as low as we possibly can. For the coming year, we've already announced it's a 2% tuition increase across the board. This is a chart that just shows you, just shows you the difference. And we're talking here about revenue, that is income that comes into the university, and most of it is tuition. Here, it's largely tuition and student-related fees. But you've got, the green line going up is where it would have been if we'd followed that growth plan that was here back in January. And then this, the lower line there, is the growth of the revenue that we'll see over the next couple of years if we stay at zero enrollment growth and a very low, very low tuition increases over that time. Well, what does that mean? Well, that means we do have to adjust the expenses that we have to stay in line, and we want to get ahead of that curve. We want to get, we want to be sure that we're, we're planning for the future in doing that. So, we have to, we have to make our recurring expenses match up with what we expect our revenues to be. And in doing that, in starting to do that, there are a number of philosophical points that we've tried to follow. First of all, we chose not to do a flat-out, across-the-board percentage cut, telling everybody, "You got to cut 2%, 5%, 10%." We decided not to do that. Why? Because it's been done before, and, but the real problem with it, it really falls on areas, maybe we had to make more investment. And it's sort of, it's not particularly strategic in terms of the quality and the, the future of the school. Okay, so we decide we're going to try to make whatever adjustments we're going to make based upon some sense of the future of the programs at the school. The second principle was, we want to minimize as much as possible cuts that directly impact students or the academic programs in which they, in which they participate. Third principle was, this is really, we need to make a number of investments around the university, and those are long-term investments in either new programs, growing programs, improving programs. And that's part of this process too. So, in, in reviewing this, we actually have some areas where we've decided to add, add some funding in order to improve those in line with our strategy. And finally, this is a, this is a multi-year process. It's not just simply cut everything at once, but the idea is to readjust how we do things. There's some things that we've already thought about doing that may take a number of years to come into play, other things that, that may have, have some impact right now. So, those are sort of the philosophical principles behind this. When it came actually to sitting down and looking at this restructuring, first of all, is I think Susan mentioned, we looked first at administrative efficiencies and where we could, where we could save money there. And about 75% of the initial steps is coming from the administrative side in terms of dollars. And it started right at the top. It started in the presidents and the provost's office. We did a major reorganization. We eliminated some positions. We reduced about $2.5 million from the recurring budget at that level. Some other areas where, where we thought we could find some administrative savings, we're trying to reduce as much as possible the use of print in favor of electronic communication. There was a reorganization in the Communication and External Affairs Department that had some savings. We also made some substantial reductions in the costs in the, in the finance area. And finally, we're looking, we've been trying to streamline many of the business processes to reduce the number of required approvals that everyone has to go through in order to get that done. If you turn the academic area, I think there is where we're actually looking at some longer-term types of reorganizations. But essentially, what we're trying to do is do things a little smarter. One area we did do that I know has affected a lot of people is that we did say that we weren't going to add new faculty lines, and we had a number of faculty lines, I think there were 25 or so that were open this year. We decided not to fill all but about seven or eight of those lines, and we'll have to see as we go forward what happens to that. Also, I think though, in here's, you know, we asked the deans, we asked the people in the dean's offices, the faculties, all to think about different ways we could, we could meet some of our financial objectives. And I think one area is going to be in being much more creative and innovative with our teaching strategies. And already, I know many faculty are working on, on the issues that the cost of higher education presents, is ways of trying to figure out how can we be more effective and innovative in, in teaching in a way that keeps the cost of higher education down as much as, as much as possible. In terms of student support and investments, you know, one area that we are going to add some some money is going to be in student academic employment. This is an issue that the Graduate Faculty Student Senate raised with us a couple of weeks ago, and they've been raising it for a while, to their credit. But we realized that, I think, the ball had dropped on this, and so we are looking at that right now. By May 15th, we'll have an announcement in terms of revisions in the compensation for student academic employment. By that, I mean things like research assistants, teaching fellows, there's a whole range of different categories of that type. And also, I think probably it's even more important to ensure that that particular part of our budget gets reviewed every year. I mean, it's important, it's a compensation, in the same way we review salaries and other things, we need to review that part and be sure that gets done every year. Another area in where we're making positive investments is that we're actually, in some areas, reducing the size of the programs, you know, for academic quality purposes. And that actually is costing the university money now, but I think it was the right thing to do in a couple of different areas. And finally, we are investing in new programs to the extent we can. I mentioned some of the programs we did, Parsons. We're also doing some investment in both Paris and Shanghai to increase the size of those programs, and they are largely Parsons programs in those places. So I want to, you know, the sense of this, it's not, we just didn't say, we'll take a scalpel to the budget and everybody's got to take a little bit off. I think this place runs very lean, for the most part. I think it's, there have been many cuts in the past that simply were across-the-board cuts. This is a chance, though, an opportunity. And we have the luxury of time, too, to do this the right way rather than to simply get into a panicking cut, which we don't need to do. We don't need to do right now. So let me turn it over to Tim, who's going to talk about the social justice initiatives, and then we can, we'll open it up to questions.
Thanks, David. In the last town hall, the issue of social justice and diversity came up a lot, so I thought I would quickly give an overview of some of the things we are doing before we get to the Q and A, just to bring you up to date on that. And there's so much to be done in this area, and we're really just at the beginning. So it's daunting, but we really have to work hard to make progress in this area. So we have had for many years, I think as some people know, a diversity approach, a diversity committee. Last year, we changed that to a social justice committee, which was to pick up all the work that was being done through the diversity initiative, but to deepen that somewhat, to really get at institutional culture, teaching and learning and pedagogy, and other institutional barriers that may be inhibiting our progress in this area. We've also brought on, as a sort of high-level advisor to David and myself, Teresa Cropper, who's, and many of you who are active in this area would have met her already. She's giving us high-level advice on how to go forward, particularly looking at the leadership issue, which I know is one of the strong recommendations from the social justice committee, is that we need to really attend to the whole leadership issue around this topic, and she's helping us rethink that one through. Some concrete steps that have been taken, we heard about undoing racism earlier, which is a great initiative the USS I think is working on. But we've also moved to gender-inclusive bathrooms, gender-neutral housing. We now have a self-identification policy for transgender and gender non-conforming students that the registrar's office has put in place, which is great. The social justice committee has representatives from across the university, from students, staff, and faculty, and they're working very hard on a range of issues. And including, the other work that they're doing is, they have produced a report, as was mentioned, on the issue of social justice leadership. There's projects working on equity in terms of faculty hiring, retention, and promotion, a big issue that we have lots of work to be done in that area. There's some research going on about social justice and learning from other institutions and best practices at the moment, and generally trying to improve communication and dialogue across the whole new school and connect to people who, and groups across the faculty, students, and staff who are active in this area. And really, there are many people who are active in this area, actually. So in terms of faculty-focused initiatives, we have a learning series that's been going on, which is focused on increasing equity in the classroom, looking at cross-cultural teaching techniques, and community-driven civic engagement. We've had about 100 participants, faculty participants thus far, and we'll be doing three more sessions in the spring, for anyone that's interested in that. Student-focused initiatives, there was a wonderful leadership retreat last summer, right? Is that right?
Fall.
Fall, sorry, in September, right, that Jesse and others were part of, Jesse Villalobos. Again, we had a tremendous interest in that, I think 100 applicants, students applied to be a part of that. We couldn't accommodate them all, so we'll be doing it again. In fact, I think I even have a picture of them all. Well, first of all, before I jump onto that, there is a blog and a website for people to visit if you want to know more about what's going on in this area. So it's Social Justice at the New School. So please visit that whenever you're interested. This is the group of students that did participate in the first leadership group around social justice and to be ambassadors across the institution, I think all divisions and all levels of education, continuing yet to PhD students were involved in this retreat, so that was fabulous. And lastly, I just will repeat what Melissa mentioned before, which is we have this event coming up on April 21st and 22nd with Grace Lee Boggs, an amazing woman who also is doing a lot of work with urban farming in Detroit, I noticed, which is really exciting. So I want to make sure we keep all of our time for Q and A, and it's 12:45, so I'll stop. Thank you.
Good timing. Is that on? Is that on? Okay. So let's open it up for questions. I think if we're trying to record this, do people need to use the mic?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll try to get the mic to you if you raise your hand. So any, let's, anybody start off, let's get some questions.
Sorry.
Oh, did I see one? A hand? Oh, good, you got it. Okay, great.
Hi, I really appreciated you having, I don't know if it's on, mentioning the social justice initiatives, and I appreciate Tim mentioning the leadership proposal that the committee has put forward. There is also another proposal to recognize, as you said, the great assets we have on campus and the ways in which we engage with the public. And I was wondering if you could give us a status report on the proposal that came out of the committee to recognize faculty work in this area in the form of a faculty award?
We-
It would be similar to the distinguished teaching award, but for social justice work.
Right. We haven't, we need to, we've got the recommendation, we haven't responded to it, as the simple answer. We need to, obviously. It's an interesting recommendation that we need to put into a faculty affairs working group to think through how we would actually do that, what evidence would be produced to, you know, to merit that award. So we've got some work to do, but thanks for bringing it up, and we do need to move on it.
Question? Comment?
Bye.
Since no one else will talk, I guess that's my cue. If the president will indulge me, I'd like to speak for maybe two minutes and then ask you the question, if that's okay with you.
Bye. Go ahead.
I want to mention that the part-time faculty is involved and represented by ACT UAW Local 7902. We are part of the UAW, and it's an extremely exciting time. As you know, it's a success story. We're part of this university in that we want the university to be a success. In recent conversation with the president of the UAW, I mentioned to him that we were concerned about curriculum, we were concerned about things that fashion, we wanted to make sure the students would get jobs when they got out. We were concerned about the drama school. We were concerned about the all-over changes that are coming. And he said, you're right, that's what the union is all about, being a partner with the university and making sure that we're all a success. And so I'm going to turn to the president now, because it's been wonderful to hear his talk about public engagement, and as you know, the union is very much involved with that, involved with Occupy Wall Street, involved with jobs. And I'm going to turn to the president and ask the president how he intends to work with the union during these changes so that we honor the legacy of the faculty here and our main goal, which is the success of the university.
Great. Now, thank you. First of all, let me say that the part-time faculty is really right at the core of what this university is. This university gets a great benefit, I think, from the part-time faculty, particularly from the expertise they bring to the classroom. Everybody contributes, full-time faculty do, part-time faculty do, staff do, students do, but part-time faculty is certainly a very important, important part of that. So I do think it's important that part-time faculty be involved in the processes at different places, at least to give us the feedback, and so we can understand the impact of what might or might not be, what might not or not be proposed. I think in individual areas, I know the deans have been talking with part-time faculty about different issues, and I'm not sure you and I have actually sat down recently and talked about, but I would invite you to do that as a representative of the union, and we could have a discussion about that. But I know a lot of consultation and discussion has gone back and forth at different levels, other levels within the university. But thank you for a second.
And I'll just add, in case people don't know, that we did make an agreement with the UAW that part-time faculty would always be represented on any committees that are dealing with curriculum and curriculum change, and we certainly made that undertaking. I hope that's happening, and we will continue to do that.
Yep.
Hi, I have two questions about full-time faculty salaries. And in recent months, the new school's 1099 has become kind of a viral document within Parsons. The 1099, for people who don't know, it's a tax form, and it discloses the salaries of the leadership of the university, as well as several colleagues who are endowed or previously had administrative positions. And many of us see huge discrepancies between the salaries listed there and our own salaries. So I guess I had two questions. One is, is the rumor true that our salaries are going to be frozen again? And the second one is, can we get a timeline on having transparency around salary brackets across the university? So as to eliminate this kind of disconcerted feeling.
In our budget, thank you, Cynthia, in our budgeting process, we are, you know, we are looking at all full-time staff and faculty salaries. I think where we are right now, given the very conservative budget assumptions we're making, we don't know for sure what, if there will be, or whether, you know, what they would be in terms of faculty raises, which would kick in next, on January 1st. That's when, and a lot is going to depend on how the fall enrollment season goes in doing that. So that's the short answer, I mean, the quick answer to your first question. I think the issue of transparency in terms of different brackets of salaries, I think that's something that I know that Tim and I and Bryna were actually just discussing this morning about what the best way to do that is. And I think I'd like to work with, we'd like to work with particularly the Faculty Senate in terms of coming up with some kind of sensible way to do that, that does, you know, that both gives enough information for faculty at the same time without getting us into a lockstep in terms of, you know, X got Y, and so I should have Y in doing that whole thing throughout. So it's a sensitive topic, but I think we want to have a discussion with the Faculty Senate about doing that.
And one of the tensions in that, because there is an analysis that the deans have as well of our salaries and banding and what have you that Human Resources did, but the tension's always whether the equity, the equity in that context is usually by discipline and practice. So it's not looking across the divisions of the university, which is one form of thinking about the equity of salaries in the university. The other is, what does this field across the country, what's typical for economics, for, you know, graphic design and so on? So reconciling those two issues is another piece of this.
Yeah, it's sort of a follow-up to that question. At the town hall that the graduate faculty, the graduate students organized a couple of weeks ago, you said a couple of times that there's actually no budget committee at the new school, which really surprised me, and it kind of surprised me that, like, I didn't know that before, you know? And I think that what came out in your presentation is that there's been some changing, some changes in regards to spending, some reductions at the level of administration, some increases at the level of student support, that came as a result of just massive amounts of, you know, immediate student pressure that was brought to bear on the administration. And it sounds as though what you're trying to tell us is that, you know, you're hearing us, and you're making spending rearrangements in the direction that we're, the directions that we, the students and faculty, are asking for. But, you know, there's another way of handling this, which is just to have a budget committee. And if there's a body that can be pressured, and that can be questioned, and that can account for all the allocations that are made, and if it has complete access to all the way, all the spending that's done at the school, and if it's populated with students and faculty, that's one way of, you know, changing the way that we do things. And, you know, we like to trump our, we like to flaunt our radical history at the new school. I mean, that's just sort of a basic democratic sort of arrangement that we could easily have.
Well, let me, first of all, the, some of the changes at the very top of the university, we're not done in response to meeting with the graduate students. They were done, they started in January, a year ago, when I first walked in the door, and we made some pretty-
[inaudible]
Oh, sure. Oh, okay. Going way back, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. No, and, again, I wasn't here when that happened, so, but I understood, I've heard stories. You know, I don't, you know, again, it's something we're going to, we try to take as much input as we can and listen to people. That's a rule, again, that I think the Faculty Senate, to some extent, the Student Senate can play as well. Whether or not we form a formal budget committee, I'm not going to say we're going to do that one way or the other. I think it's all of a sudden to look at, but you're right, we don't have one. We don't have one this time, particularly not one that's sort of representative of different constituencies across the university. Other questions, comments? Everybody just came to listen, huh? Good.
Hi, along those lines, at the last town hall meeting, I had asked a question about how we might address the fact that many of our students have lost their Pell Grant funding. And one of the ways that I had inquired about was whether we could look towards the federal government's moves in terms of their investment in community colleges, and whether there might be ways that we could partner with the community colleges here in the New York City area as a way to both help students be able to secure their four-year degree, but also in ways for us to help find cross-financial support for those students who have lost their Pell Grant funding.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if there's been any movement on that.
Oh.
Yeah. It's, I think, if I understand your question correctly, I mean, I think in terms of the bigger picture of the cost of higher education, how we think about partnerships and consortiums and ways in which community colleges kind of connect to what we're doing is a really big issue and one that we have been talking about a lot. And there are some initiatives going, I think, I don't know if David Scobie's here, but certainly his division. Do you want to speak to that, David, a bit, and what you're doing?
We've also, we've been very actively in the last several months reaching out to community colleges in the metro area for just the same reasons that Kat Uen was saying. I think we're at the beginning of a complicated conversation. I don't think that's, and clearly, student financially, it is an important part of that, but a very complicated part of it, which I'm coming to understand. I think we're going to, as we build better pathways, I hope, from community colleges to the new school, it will take real collaborative work to make sure that it serves students' financial and educational needs.
Such deep systemic problems, it's really, we're going to have to look at it as a sector, not just individual institutions.
You know, one of the things I think we found out since that last town hall was, you know, Stephanie Bronner's been looking at this, is the number of Pell Grants within Lang, which is actually extremely high relative to other liberal arts colleges around the country. So I know Pell Grants are under pressure, I think, in Congress and the administration. I think, I think so far, the administration and members of Congress have been able to hold the line in doing that. There have been some other changes, for example, interest deferral on graduate loans, which, you know, hasn't been held, and that's, I know that's a burden for, a burden for many of our students, who have to start paying interest right from the day they get the loan as opposed to waiting until they, waiting until they graduate. Other?
Hi, I want to thank you for publishing the annual report on our website. I have two questions. One is, when will we see the report for June 30th, 2011? And the second is, the annual report gives a lot of good detail about endowment investments, which speaks very well to our trustees, to potential donors. I wonder if it could be possible that the annual report could give more detail on the expenditure side. Right now, the income statement, the statement of expenses is- Right now, the income statement, the statement of expenses is quite summarized. It would be really helpful if we could get more detail.
And what kind of detail, just to give you a sense, would it be by category of spending, by, you know, kinds of activities?
Yes, I'm on page 20, functional expenses. There's a single line for instruction and departmental research. That would be very helpful to see how those changes have broken down, especially over the four-year period. We see, so, speaking to Cynthia's issue about salaries, we have gotten some increases in support for our research, which, I'm not clear what lines that's on. And specifically, I feel that instruction and departmental research has too much in it. And similarly, operation and maintenance of plant, I would be very interested in seeing how rent expense breaks down there, so then we could look at how that'll drop once we're in the new building.
That's good, good points, good points. Frank, is Frank, where's Frank Barletta? No, no, I'm not gonna ask you, I'm just gonna ask you, when do we, when do we actually put out the 2011?
I believe it's gonna be coming out, is this working?
Yeah.
I believe it's gonna be coming out shortly. CEA puts it out. We do have a financial report in there. We could put more detail in there on instruction and research, and also on operation of physical plant.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Questions? Oh, we got one?
Hi. Thank you again for doing this. And just a quick question to follow up to an earlier one from an earlier town hall, which had to do with the level of staff within the university, and particularly within Parsons, which is the experience that I know best. And the, at the time, I think, Tim, your response was that we had, over the past few years, increased faculty dramatically, really impressively, and it's something worth celebrating. And we hadn't increased staff proportionally, in part because of the cost of that. And now we were starting to slow down on the increase in faculty, and we might look at staffing. And I can just give you a particular example of the impact of staff. We have, within the School of Design Strategies, I think around 1,500 students that we service, and about five or six full-time staff altogether for that many students. I actually did a survey, I direct a graduate program, I did a survey of competing graduate programs, and asked each of them, how many students do you have, how many full-time staff do you have in your program? And in each case, they had about, between 20 and 30 graduate students and one full-time staff member. So my question is, and then, there are two really important roles that staff play, many, but two that I want to point out. One is, they're able to attend to a lot of the detail-oriented material that faculty are not trained for nor particularly good at, and that allows faculty to take on some of the other areas that they are really good at. And the second is, staff often are the lifeblood of programs. I can't tell you the number of graduate programs I've been at, where it's the staff member who is the person that the students go to when there are real problems, and so they're critical. So I guess the question is, as we struggle, truly struggle, day to day, to run programs that are radically understaffed, I'm curious about the situation moving forward, given that we're sort of tightening belts and trying to reduce our costs, we're ending some searches for full-time faculty. Is there any hope that we will be able to continue to increase staff, at least in some areas where we're woefully understaffed? Thanks.
Good. And I think you point out the importance of staff, and I think for exactly the reasons you did, and it's exactly the right point. Frankly, lots of times, faculty say, oh, get less staff and, you know, more faculty. But I think it's the right balance, you know, having the right faculty with the right staff to support what they do that makes all the difference in the world. And now that I think we're looking at a flat, more of a flat growth trajectory in terms of students' enrollment, and with that, we'll go, with that, we'll go faculty to some extent. I think we, I think probably the next investments we do make is trying to make these programs better, both from the student standpoint and from the faculty's standpoint. And I think your point, Jaime, is exactly right. We need to, we need to give more support. So I think when we look to make investments in reshaping the programs and trying to improve the quality of the programs throughout, it's going to be finding the right staff, new staff or whatever, getting that mix right in a way that I think is, frankly, I do think it's gotten a bit out of whack, out of whack here, so.
I agree, I think, I agree with absolutely everything you said, obviously, because that's what we were talking about last time. But it's unfortunate, obviously, the circumstance caught up with us. The only money that, discretionary monies in the provost office that we've had around any lines have been for full, dedicated to full-time faculty lines. We did get an agreement when David first started, that we could actually just look at that pool of money for the divisions writ large. And I was wanting to make that change precisely for this reason, because I was very worried about the, all the things you just said. But, you know, circumstances have kind of, have made it more difficult, but, which is not an excuse, we need to really take whatever resources we have, and I think this is a really urgent issue, I totally agree. So the next cycle, we just need probably from programs and from divisions to get a more detailed understanding of where, with the precious dollars we have and the positions that we can release, exactly where and in what structures are the most effective and efficient way of doing that, to provide the kind of support that you need. So if you could work with your deans and others to help us understand where to use that, those resources, we'll definitely try and make it happen. And it might be moving people around as well.
I have a question here. You explained to us that enrollment projections are now at 0% growth, but in the last year or so, we've actually seen declines in enrollment across different parts of the university.
Yeah, some programs, yeah.
And while some of that is linked, obviously, to a systemic set of issues, I'm wondering, and I realize you're still doing a strategic planning process that isn't, hasn't been completed, but what are some of the strategies at the program, divisional or university level, that you're imagining might be useful to ensure that we actually achieve that 0% growth rather than decline?
Well, I think, I think what we're trying to do is look at, evaluate the programs we have. And so a number of programs, we picked out where we think there's been some weakness, or there may be some potential we haven't realized, and really tried to get, we have one or two people looking at doing studies of some of those. But I think the idea is to be sure, is try to match the programs with what the, what the demand for those programs is from the outside, from the outside world. I think what that means is, over a period of time, you're going to be adjusting. So there are going to be some programs, frankly, I think grew too fast or too big, which has impacted them. You also have the phenomenon now that in some areas, in the external world, students or potential students are saying, well, that program's not as attractive as it used to be. That's another reason for, just because of that skill set that program provided is not as relevant to me today. And what you do about, what you can do about that is either decrease, intentionally decrease the size of that program, or change the program, so it's more relevant. And here's where I think we need a lot of help from faculty is, and staff, is how, you know, we, there's some programs here, frankly, that have been running for a long, long time. And while there have been changes around the edges, there haven't been sort of maybe wholesale changes to keep up with what's happening in the external world. I think we all need to, we can't do it, Tim and I can't do it from our position, we need, we need all of you to be aware of where those might be, and begin to adjust those, adjust those programs. On the other hand, with new programs, or with some of the programs that maybe are under-enrolled, where there's a lot more demand for those sorts of programs, we would see, we would see growing there. Again, my touchstone strategically is always to come back, is I want to be sure that when we graduate a student from any of these programs, they have the best career prospects, you know, whether it's a job or whether it's doing whatever they want to do with that degree as they can possibly head. And I think that's a moral responsibility we have to, to the student body. And it only becomes clear in tough economic times that are facing, you know, recent college graduates, recent college graduates right now.
And maybe to give a couple of concrete examples, there's an impressive number of new programs coming down over the next two or three years, which also go right to the heart, for the most part, of the academic vision and mission that we're forming. But equally, with existing programs, looking at, to give an example from your area, there were declines in the urban policy and analysis program. It's very New York-centric, very New York-based, and yet clearly, urban policy and analysis has got to be one of the, one of the most pressing global issues going around. International Affairs, that you've joined with recently, has a great urban track in it for looking globally at these questions, bringing them together to work on, what's it called, Global Urban Futures, I think it is? Yep. As an initiative to try and really revitalize that program, make it relevant to a broader audience, and really get it to, in touch with the most pressing issues that are facing the planet. Is one, looking at double degree, BAMA's in a different way, so the bachelor's program as well as Lang programs, articulating far better into master's degrees, looking at how those, the time can be shortened and the expense can be reduced in those double degrees by really pairing them up properly and packaging them well and recruiting them, and so on. So we're looking at across existing programs where we think we need to revitalize, bringing new ones in, and using that for two things. One, to do what you said, trying to make sure that we're secure, and also to give us more to reduce the size of the programs that have simply grown too large for a whole bunch of reasons.
I have a question regarding student cost. Could you tell us what efforts, strategic or otherwise, are being done or being accomplished with development, especially with endowed scholarship?
Yeah. Well, we constantly, we get, we've gotten a number of gifts, we constantly are looking for gifts, and trying to develop our, both our underlying alumni source as well as other potential. It's a constant process. Is, you know, is one particular thing, I can't, you know, I can't say that we're doing. We're looking for money wherever we can, wherever we can find it. And the things that are really high on our priority list to try to fund would be, would be student scholarships, as well as, as well as support for faculty and research in doing those. And those are things that any good university has to have more of. We are, you know, as you all know, we're compared to other, if you compare us to other universities of our size, you know, we're fairly underendowed in terms of money being, in part because, you know, we really haven't cultivated our alumni base very well over the years. And it's only now, in the last few years, that we've actually had, you know, people focusing on that and doing that. And that is, that is a very long-term, long-term project. And so I don't think there are any magic bullets there in terms of doing it, but that's just one of the levers you're trying to pull or push, I mean.
I have a question, I have a question about, so the chart you showed projects about five years out, showing growth for the next five years at, actually, my question is about, yes, that one. So it's, obviously, it's a very significant cut in growth projections. So I have two questions related. One is, the strategic plans you're developing, are they five and then 10-year plans as well? And I have a question about what the, you expect the university to look like after five and 10 years. There's a third part to that, which is, how have, how do these projections map against increased costs of being in New York City? Of an institution, just like any individual, needs to pay its way, especially at this expensive place. So how do these map against those projections?
A couple of questions there. First of all, what will it look like in five to 10 years out? What I expect to see, five to 10 years out, is a focused institution that really is addressing social problems, particularly in the creative, the creativity innovation that we're going to require in our country and the rest of the world in order to succeed. So I see a more focused institution on that. In terms of financially, I think in five years out, I mean, we may have some growth. It's not that we're, you know, it's not that we're completely against growth, but I wouldn't be surprised if we were pretty close to the same size in terms of, in terms of student enrollment. And then finally, the question of price increases in New York. I mean, our hope at least is to use inflation, and again, from the student's perspective, trying to keep increases we have in line with inflation. We can't, I can't promise that, I don't know what the expense is going to be like going forward. New York is interesting because one sector, the housing sector, is one that can have an inflation rate that's far different than other things, like food, or clothing, or other things. And that's an intractable problem we have in New York, and there's not a whole lot, a whole lot that we can really do about it. I don't think we should necessarily put that all on the back of the students by, you know, increasing tuition, increasing tuition at a much higher, much higher rate. But that, I mean, that's an interesting, I mean, that's a difficult relationship between our costs, our other costs, and what it costs to house. It affects everybody, affects, you know, students, faculty, staff, in terms of the cost of living here, here in New York.
I just wanted to turn the conversation back to, you mentioned at the beginning of the town hall, the New School student who was arrested, I believe her name is Cecily? And she was not only arrested, but in fact, was seizing in handcuffs, and my understanding was that she didn't receive medical attention for quite some time, and is, was in jail for 40 hours, and is now being charged with assaulting a police officer. You say you were reaching out to her, and that's great. I was just curious about if part of that reaching out was to take a bit of a stand towards the NYPD? Because you say that we should be safe, and that's true, but the onus is not just on us to do what we can, but on the police to not brutalize and abuse students.
Yeah. I mean, other than saying, you know, I agree, I agree. I mean, safety is, you know, everybody's got to be involved in that, in doing that. And I think one of the things in our occupation that we had was, you know, trying to avoid those situations entirely, which, whether, you know, I think with some amount of luck, we were able to, we were able to do. I think that, you know, I want to comment in particular on that student's case, other than say that we, you know, are reaching out, we're trying to figure out, you know, learn more about that situation. So, you know, at this point, I wouldn't really comment on that particular episode, but I agree with the general, the general principle.
Are you going to state something to the NYPD, or do you have?
As I just said, we're gathering information about it, we'll see what, we'll see what we come up with, and whether we do or not, and whether we, you know, whether it's, I'm not really sure what we would do with it.
Yeah, I have a question in regard to teaching strategies. You've mentioned that a few times, and I think you mentioned it at the last town hall as well.
Yeah.
And in previous institutions that I've worked in, teaching strategies or looking at the way that we teach has often been code for, you know, looking at efficiencies, or either looking at innovation, which I think is, that's very, very positive. And I'm wondering, when you sort of talk about the way that we do things, and the potential around, you know, revisiting or rethinking our teaching strategies, I wonder what you mean in relation to that, and how you're characterizing that.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think, I think all those things, all of the above. How do you do it, how do you do it better, it's more effective with students? That's a key part of any teaching strategy. How do you do it, yeah, how do you do it more efficiently? That's an important part of teaching strategy. I think we have to, as academics or as educators, we have to realize the state the higher education system's in, okay? The prices, the cost has gone way up, way up, it's becoming to the point where it's not affordable by, you know, sort of a middle-class family anymore, a private institution. And then we also have in the state systems, you know, withdrawal of support there for the money. So I think the entire higher education sector does have to figure out and be very creative about figuring out how to be more effective at teaching at the same, or at least even lower, costs. So I don't, that's got to be part of the, that's got to be part of the equation. So I think all the things you mentioned are part, are part of what I mean by teaching strategies.
I just want to encourage us all to remember that we're at the New School, and the reason I'm saying that is because I've had an opportunity to be at several conferences recently, where I've heard presidents of universities talking about how their university is reinventing higher education. So Michael Crowe, for example, was at Arizona State, hosted a conference I attended recently. Angel Cabrera, who's now taken, gone from Thunderbird to George Mason. And I just want to encourage all of us, but especially you, Tim and David, to, this is the time for the New School to make some bold statements, and to step outside of the box, we've never been in the box. But I feel like everybody else is stealing our thunder. I go to these convenings, and I hear, we are reinventing higher education, and we're innovating by having project-based learning, or something like this. And I think, why aren't we out there making that message? And I just want to encourage you and all of us to remember that, you know, we have something very special here, and we're not saying it enough, I think.
Great. I think this time is a great opportunity for all of us. I mean, the New School can be, it's already been innovative, it's great now, but it can even, it ought to be at the cutting edge. It ought to be at the cutting edge of teaching, of whatever you call it, teaching strategies or teaching the way you, but... or teaching the way you do, and constantly coming up with new things. There is a tendency that we all have to fall back into patterns that we're comfortable with, going day in and day out. I mean, Tim has talked about this quite a bit, you know, why is a semester 15 weeks? You know, why does a course have to be, I don't know, three hours or four hours? You can ask, those are questions, those are basic questions that we at the New School should be, we should be questioning and pushing the boundaries. We can do it. We can do it. So I think we need to, we have a tremendous legacy and tradition of doing that, and I think we have to, and that's what I, when I mentioned earlier about turning on ourselves, our creative abilities and energies.
There's two paths to that. One is to better communicate what we already do, which you mentioned at the end, and the other is to take, is to use that platform to do more of what we're not doing, I mean, do better what we're not doing, and be more innovative in ways we're not at the moment. And you look across the major areas of learning that we have here, and everyone's looking at each other's learning kind of frameworks as potentially holding some kind of answers. So the liberal arts is much more interested in project-based and studio-based and learning, and the studio-based programs are looking at the liberal arts, and everyone professional in both directions, needing sort of stronger humanities and ethics and what have you. So everyone's kind of looking over the fence. It feels to me like we can sort of break that down and sort of start afresh without any particular area owning that pedagogical framework, but rather see them as all resources that we can all use across the board.
And that's what I hope this whole strategic process, that's going to, hopefully it'll energize many people to begin to do that within their own area, think that way in their own area. Because, you know, there's no way, again, it's going to happen just from the provost or president's office. It's got to come from people on the ground who understand the educational process, what their students need, and being creative and innovative in that way. We need to support. I agree. We need to support you in doing that. But you're the creative ones. You're the ones with the creative energy.
I think that the faculty would love to be involved, but to support Jamer's point, if, right now, we're so actively involved in service that when you say, oh, it's easy to go in lockstep, it's like, how can I manage this? And so if we get more support on that end, you'll find people, you know, sort of rising to the occasion to do something creative in that way.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, people work incredibly hard in this institution, there's no doubt.
I don't mean to bring it back to tuition again, but from my, when I go onto the student account on my New School, and this is something that came up earlier, and that's why I'm bringing it up. I know that there's costs as far as New York City, as far as like transportation and food and everything, but then my belief is that there's also other costs besides tuition that are controlled by the New School as far as like housing and those kind of costs. So if tuition's only increasing by 2%, I'm very happy. But do you know anything, is that going to follow with everything else? Is housing only going to be going up 2% or is it going to stay the same?
No, housing is going to go up more. Housing is going to go up more, and I think that was the decision in looking at, just, I mean, we try to keep housing and food, it's a non, you know, it's not a profitable, it breaks even, basically. And we're trying to keep the cost of the people actually use the housing and choose to use it, you know, consistent with what the expenses are for that. So no, it'll go up, it'll probably go up more. It'll go up more. I know it goes up more than 2%. What exactly is, I'm not sure it's been posted yet, so.
All right, here. I guess, given that, those announcements were made at the beginning, that there's going to be an upcoming student union where 95th Avenue is right now in the future, are the prospects for students and student workers to unionize at this university going to be changing in the upcoming years?
I don't know about that. It's always possible. It's always possible.
I just have a quick question. It's, as faculty, we can try to do as much as we can with little resources, and one thing that would make a huge impact is if we had some wiggle room with our catering services.
Yeah.
So is there any way we can do without Chartwells or at least really open up the options? Because it's so expensive.[1359.54][1359.54][applause]
You can make yourself a hero now, David.
What's that?
Be a hero right now.
I am certainly well aware of concerns about the catering service. I think there's some misunderstandings about using a particular catering service. On the other hand, I think there's also some misunderstandings about, you know, why, I mean, there's some external issues such as safety that we need to have. But we're working right now, I believe, on a change to that policy, try to identify a number of providers. We need to have people who are coming into the school to serve, you know, if it's beyond just going out and two people going out and getting a bagel or something and bringing it in, that's one thing. But if it's in part of a class, if it's part of a regular program or session, we have responsibility for the safety, the food safety of people using that. And so I think, I mean, I think what we're looking at right now are ways, you know, for, I mean, Chartwells, I think we'll always have one sort of caterer who does, you know, a lot of the staff and administrative events and other things. But we're also looking at whether we can identify a number of providers, certified providers, you know, who can offer choice in coming in. Now, that being said, there's always going to be, it's always going to be cheaper to go get a, you know, a couple of boxes of pizza someplace and bringing in, but we really, you know, for safety reasons, for liability reasons, we really can't have, we really want to avoid having that happen. So you have to understand the trade-off for the food security, the food safety is probably a little bit higher prices, but I think we can do much better in terms of finding the right, you know, finding more options for people to, people to use. But that's, you know, I've heard a lot about that, yeah.
Frank might be able to answer this more accurately, but I gather there's also a cross-subsidy going on to keep the student food cheaper, isn't there?
Oh, got to get a mic, got to get a mic if you're going to talk.
Michael?
Here comes, hold on, hold on.
We're going to be dropping the prices down on catering, I believe about by a third, which will allow people to get more food for the money that they have in their budgets. And as David said, we're going to look at other options besides just using Chartwells. And one of the issues is food safety. Every one of our venues are A-rated by New York City, the standards.
We're also looking at travel, you might be pleased to know.
Travel is the other issue that I know comes up a lot.
I know that comes up a lot.
For faculty and staff.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, okay.
About Omega. We have research funds that we need to really look, we have a very small budget.
Sure.
And definitely Omega is not the first I would use if not forced to.
Yeah. Well, I believe, and I believe that one of the things we just, I think it's, has it come out yet, Frank? But I think we have a system now that allows, you know, a web fare, finding last-minute deals on the web in a way of doing that without, maybe it's not been, it's been rolled out yet, Frank? I'm not sure. Or Craig?
Yes, they've come out.
Okay. I think we need to do a little more communication about that. What do you, just want to describe it briefly, Craig, or?
All right. I'll bring it back.
Can you just describe that?
I'm going to let Craig do this, because Craig was the one that put this all together.
We have just, we are allowing web fares to be purchased now. These are one-ups that the airlines make available for a very short time period. Previously, we had excluded those because they require immediate purchase. So given our structure, we always wanted to have our travel authorizations in place. But we have announced, I think it was about two weeks ago, that we are allowing these web fares to be purchased on the spot. So that should substantially have budgetary savings. There are strings attached. It is a non-cancelable purchase, but that's the way the web fares operate. So that's in place now.
Right. Yeah, I think the general principle we're trying to move towards is faculty, faculty and staff who have control over budgets have a real incentive to conserve those. And so we want to give people a chance to do that, you know, frankly, if somebody gets out of line and does, it will come after the fact after you. But I think to make it easier for everyone, I think we have to have, we're trying to get more flexibility upfront in how we do it. I mean, there's always the issue, you know, if you want it paid out of a university account, as opposed to putting it on your own credit card or something, that certainly is desirable to have it. So there's going to be a little more procedure around doing it that way than if you just paid with your own credit card and then saw reimbursement.
Yeah, this is a question about the bell schedule.
Yes.
Especially about the last class of the day that is being pushed to 7 o'clock. And I want to know if you did any canvassing of faculty or students or, I mean, it's a small pool, we're competing with Cooper Union, we're competing with NYU FIT about the timing of that final class.
You're talking in terms of, from the part-time faculty, teaching it, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I don't know. Do you know?
Is Liz Ross here? She's led this effort. Liz, do you want to speak to that at all?
Ah, there you go. I think, oh, sorry. I was just trying to remember, and I think that that, you're talking about Parsons, the Parsons schedule?
That's the only one I know of.
Right, because the rest of the university has 6 o'clock classes or 7:00. But I think at Parsons it came about in order to, especially on the graduate level, to allow for more collaboration of faculty teaching across divisions and teaching together. And a number of the graduate programs in the rest of the university wanted the option of having a longer class. So there's a 4 to 7 slot, and there's 7 to 9:30, whatever it is. So I think that's how that came about.
Okay. All right, well, we're at 1:30, and Tim and I'll be around a little while longer if you want to come up and formally talk to us. But I just want to urge you to come on Thursday afternoon at 3:00 in Lang Cafe to hear Frank Barletta and Neil Gourvoy talk about higher education financing. And we look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you.[1792.83][1792.83][applause]